Opportunity to answer those questions. So the first is just for you, you all to have the opportunity to introduce yourself. Tell us why you ran for school board and what your goals are for this school year. So we'll start with you, Dr. Brock.
Yes. Good evening, everyone. I am Dr. Casey Brock. So great to be here with all of you. I'm just coming from another virtual Zoom, which kind of made me rethink how I would introduce myself to you all. And they're just talking a lot about where we're from and why we're here. And I come to you as an educator. I've been in education for over eighteen years. I started as a first grade teacher, a sixth grade teacher, a college counselor, an assistant principal, a district coach. So I've had all of those different types of jobs. But the biggest reason I'm doing this is for all of my former students. They're now in their twenties, many of them, believe it or not. And I think about the kinds of opportunities they had or didn't have. And that sits with me all the time. You never forget that experience. And so I know that Atlanta Public Schools can be great, many of them are, but can be even better. And right now, where our literacy scores sit, looking at close to thirty percent, but then we're celebrating our graduation rate of close to ninety percent. I know that there is a gap there that needs to be filled. And I believe that I have the experience and the background to be able to be ready to go as soon as we're sworn in and be as supportive as I possibly can be to other school board members, to the superintendent, and to communities that rely on the school board to make excellent decisions for young people. And I'm really excited to answer any of the questions you all have. I live in Kirkwood, so I'm right down, actually walk by Tumor almost every day. Many of you probably see me walking. I actually knocked on some of your doors as your neighbor. But also, I care a ton about East Atlanta, about Kirkwood. This is my neighborhood. I grew up in DeKalb County and actually I'm so proud to be back in the county that I grew up in and to hopefully represent all of you.
All right. Thank you so much. Ayesha Stith.
Fun. Thanks so much for the invitation. I appreciate this. I am the parent of three APS students. So if you get any obstruction of noise, please just disregard. I've given them all very, their marching orders to sort of stay out of my office for the timing. We'll see how that works. And I am also a product of APS. I attended North Atlanta High School. And my husband went to Booker T. Washington. And the other, at some point, a couple of weeks ago, we realized our kids are fourth generation APS students. So needless to say, we believe in public education. What I didn't know before I kind of got in this seat, I did not realize where our school district was. I could feel it in the city. I tell everyone that there's a strict, direct correlation between public education and economic mobility. You know, so when we're looking at how it feels to live in a city like Atlanta, you can kind of tell where public education was, but I hadn't gotten my hands into that data. And the closer I got to it, the closer I thought, oh, wait a minute. This is not a reflection of my city, of the city I grew up in. And this is not a good use of our tax dollars, quite frankly. So that is what made me really take the jump to do this. I am not a politician. You will find that out very easily tonight. But I think, I know I'm in it for the right reasons. I'm in it for the love of Atlanta. I'm in it for my kids, but I'm in it for the just shy of fifty thousand seats in kids that we serve in Atlanta Public Schools, who we could do a lot better for and by. So I'm looking forward to the questions tonight and answering them candidly and getting to know some of you better. Thanks so much.
Thank you. All right, Royce Mann.
Thank you so much for having us tonight. My name is Royce Mann. I am a lifelong Atlantan, a proud graduate of Atlanta Public Schools, Grady High School, now Midtown, class of two thousand twenty twenty. A recent Emory alum and a longtime community organizer. And I am running to bring the voice of somebody who has been a student recently in our schools to our nine-member Board of Education. We have the perspective of educators, we have the perspective of parents, and I think that we should have the perspective of someone who's been a student in our schools in the last two decades. I've been working for about the last eight years to uplift the voices of students in Atlanta and beyond. I got started organizing, leading the March for Our Lives movement in Atlanta, fighting for common sense gun legislation, safer schools, and mental health support for our students. And from there, realized that the most effective advocacy happens at the local level. I joined the Go Team at Grady, was appointed by the Board of Education to the District's LGBTQ Task Force, and interned directly for the Board of Education. And in that experience, I saw a disconnect between those on the board, who are usually very well-intentioned, and the experiences of students every day in Atlanta. And on the board, I want to address the issues that I see as most pressing for our students and families. And that includes increasing mental health support and guidance for our students by doubling the number of counselors in our schools, ensuring more access to extracurricular and job training programs for our high schoolers by working with MARTA to provide free public transit for them, and ensuring that we invest in early education and provide universal pre-K for three- and four-year-olds across the city, because that's how we provide a strong foundation for every family. So I'm excited to talk more and just grateful to be here.
All right. Thank you. So we're going to stick with that pattern. So Royce Mann, the next question, we'll start with you and then we'll go down the line. So the next question, we're just going to jump right into the hard stuff. So when thinking about some of these challenges that our district and, you know, our city and state, everyone's facing with under-enrolled schools, but we've also got over-enrolled schools in our district as well. When you think about those challenges, how would you contribute to that conversation as part of the Board of Education to maximize our efficiencies and do right by our children and communities?
This is a great question, one that we've been continually answering. And I think it starts with ensuring that we have really strong community engagement. I've been disappointed largely in this process. There've been a number of lapses from a meeting that was supposed to be yesterday, that there was very little notice that it had been canceled and a lot of parents and community members didn't receive that notice in time. To discussions not actually originally incorporating conversations around programming and really just looking at facilities versus how we can actually build out innovative programs that can bring families back to the district. And I think that that's where we need to focus. We've been talking about an Atlanta School of the Arts for years. I remember when I was reporting for the Grady Southerner at the State of the District when Dr. Maria Karstafen was departing the district. And she talked about how that was sort of her departing promise, was that we would have a School of the Arts. I think that having innovative programs like that can help alleviate overcapacity at some of our schools and that we should be looking at that versus just closing schools. That said, when we are repurposing facilities, we need to regain the trust of Atlantans. We already have forty-seven unactivated properties that we own as a district, meaning properties that aren't currently serving our families. And so of course, folks are gonna feel distrust when we talk about repurposing more facilities, because we've seen, we've seen facilities sit vacant for years. And so we need to have a clear plan for if we are repurposing any schools, how we are going to continue to use those sites. And I'm glad that we are seeing some of those specifics. You look at a site like the Whiteford Tumor Annex that provides early education for a lot of families. They're finally talking about where those pre-K classrooms might move, including a couple to Tumor Elementary. But if we're not actually talking about what we're providing for families and only talking about the buildings, then I think we're going to continue setting ourselves up for a failed approach that will force more tough decisions sooner than we would hope.
All right. Thank you so much. Ayesha Stith.
One name basis, Ayesha will do. I'm a data-driven person, so I like to get in there and let the data speak for itself. But I think I've said a hundred times on this campaign trail, we cannot fix a problem we are unwilling to call out. And I think APS has done a great job, a little old Southern sweep it under the rug. But that doesn't work. That's not working for our forty-seven, forty-eight thousand students that we have. I want to be very careful here, because I was caught on Fox Five and the only snippet they put of me was saying, we have to close schools. I don't want to lead with that at all. That's not my perspective. What I was saying then was that we have to look at the totality of our district. What is working? We have to look at our charter schools. What is working? We cannot continue to stand behind schools that do not work. We cannot continue to want to rush away from the conversations about buildings that do not work for communities. So I think with the community in mind, I mean, that's the beauty of our school district. It's supposed to be community by community. That community voice should be very big. With the community voice leading the conversation, we have to figure out what to do with schools. And in instances where schools need or will close, it is about the messaging that APS gives the community. The messaging, and it's like a one and a two. The school is closing, but here is what you get in return. That's where I was cut off on Fox Five. What are we able to offer communities if a school is going to close? And these are hard conversations, but we can't keep running from them. Like this city is growing like no one's business. APS is not. We are shrinking and we don't want that. We've got to solve that problem. So I think the first thing is to talk about it, like why are schools underutilized? That's a really important conversation. Why are some communities doing what, I mean, backflips to remain in certain districts? I love to ask those communities, now why is it you don't want to go to the next cluster? And you get silence on the other side, right? But these are the conversations we have and we can have, have to have, and we can have them in a healthy way. But again, we cannot fix any of this if we're not willing to call it out.
Thank you. And to you, Dr. Brock.
Yeah. So something I share often with people is, so we talk about facilities quite a bit in forums, but as it looks to be right now the case, we will likely not be making this decision. But the most important thing is to think about who we will be after it happens and how we will be partners with community once that decision is made. And so a couple of the things that I know for sure we would be responsible for, one is that transition and the conversation and the communication and just making sure that we are, you know, as present as we can possibly be and that we're actually listening to what people are saying in terms of the transition and decisions that are made. I think the other is, you know, we will be responsible for figuring out where the East Plus Dollars go. And that is a huge responsibility on top of just already managing this massive budget. And we'll be figuring out where to put a lot of that money once these facilities are repurposed. And, and that is going to take a lot of community voice and also making sure that we're looking at it equitably. Because oftentimes, the loudest voices tend to get the most. And it's my intention, especially thinking about running for a citywide seat. Part of the reason I want to do that is because I want to think about what Atlanta looks like as a whole to make sure that we're taking care of all of our students and not just students in certain parts of the city. And then I think we need to be creative about the usage of some of our facilities that don't have plans yet. Something I've been sharing as, for the past twelve years, I've been in the college and career space. And there is a huge demand right now for workforce development and certification programs that are long gone once we told every kid that it's a hundred percent college, which I have thoughts on that, we can talk about later, but I know I'm on a time limit. But we can do things like have Home Depot partner with a school, repurpose it, renovate it, make it beautiful, and then have students come and earn a manufacturing or a construction certification. Same with aviation and Delta. I think there's just so many ways that we can be innovative and think about twenty twenty-five, like what students need now, what families are asking for with some of the facilities that are not being used or that might be repurposed. And then the last thing, and sorry, I don't see a timer, so I'm trying my best to stay within two minutes, I'm guessing here, but you can tell me, is understanding that we have to have better high school programs across the city. So I like the direction that Carver is going in, but for us to feel like a lot of our high schools would have some kind of specialized program or magnet program or something that could redistribute high school students would be helpful, because then when we're talking about rezoning, it wouldn't be such a difficult conversation, because there'd be lots of great programs that students would be proud to graduate from and parents would be happy to send their kids to.
Thank you, Dr. Brock. All right. So obviously, we can't have a forum, we're talking about public education and not address the achievement gap. This is top of mind for every city in America. So when, and we'll start with you here, Dr. Brock, when you think about a city like Atlanta, you think about the things that the board is already doing to address this. What tangible steps would you encourage the board to make to close the achievement gap in APS?
Yes, I love this question. So there's a couple of things. One, I saw a statistic today, many of you probably saw the same one, that the life expectancy in Atlanta is split across the city. So in one part of the city, north side, some of east side, it's eighty-seven, and then sixty-seven when you look at the south side and the west side. And so much of that starts with what we are doing in our schools to provide students with the kind of opportunities they need to have a life of choice, to have a life of infinite possibilities. And so it's really important that we're making that investment. As a former teacher, as a former first grade teacher, my first job was teaching kids how to read. So I'm very passionate about making sure that our literacy proficiency rates are increased. Some specific ways that I think we need to do or that we can do that. One, that's really important to me is, yes, we are moving towards science of reading and it's being implemented. But from what I'm understanding in the conversations I'm having, it's not being implemented with fidelity. And that's really important, because as you'd imagine, there's a lot of educators out there who learned a completely different way of teaching reading, and now they've got to adapt a new way. But then to make sure that happens, that's a change management challenge. And so making sure that we're auditing and going into schools and making sure that that it's happening the way that it should be. Otherwise, we will lose years, more years of students not being able to have, to, to be able to read and to be able to access that language. And then I don't, I'm not against stipends. I think stipends are really great incentive, especially when we're thinking about improving scores across the district. And I'm also, I think we should be sending some of our best talent to some of our schools that have the lowest performance right now. And there should be incentives for that as well, because if we don't have our best talent in some of our schools that are struggling the most, then I think that will continue to happen. And we need some of our best teachers to be able to be teaching our students. And then the last is just thinking about literacy specialists. I know that we're starting to have those in schools, but again, figuring out where they go first and why. And again, thinking about what those literacy proficiency rates look like. And if they are lower, giving consideration to some of those schools to have some of the strongest and to get them first, so that we can start to improve some of those rates for the schools that are the lowest performing right now.
Thank you. All right, Ayesha.
One of the things that is really alarming to me, and I guess because I'm a sociologist by trade, whatever exactly that means, we refuse to talk about poverty. I have filled out maybe ten surveys, if not more. We have asked about every minority group. No one will ask questions about poor children, and I'm confused by it. And I think it does us a huge injustice. You know, we are constantly talking about equity, which, if you paid attention to me, is not my favorite word. But we're constantly talking about that, and every community doesn't need the same thing. But what you've got to look at is what does every community need? So to solve the achievement gap, we're going to have to look at poverty. We're going to have to look at ways to help children who may not have the community, the parental, the in-home support. In another cluster, a parent told me literacy rates would be much better if everyone just did the two hours of reading with their children that she did. And I'm like, okay, I work full-time most of the time. My husband works full-time. I've had three kids. I don't know that I've had two hours a night to read to my children. And I know there are a whole lot of people in this city. I think of a grandmother who's raising her five, she is handicapped and she is raising her five grandchildren alone with no real help. And she is begging for help. You know, those scenarios don't allow for a parent to have two hours a night. So in my mind, it's like, well, what can we do where people don't feel that their tax dollar is being abused or going to something that, you know, doesn't properly support their city? But what can we do in communities where the support is needed, where we can get tutorial services? My daughter had to do matinazium for a number of years to kind of get over a hump. She's no different than any other kid. If kids had, if kids had access to matinazium, we will see the scores go up immensely. I'm, my daughter's now taking the ACT. I don't know who does well on the ACT without private tutoring. Not, you don't even want to know the cost of a private tutor. But that's why you don't see those. It's not that a certain set of kids is any smarter than others. We just haven't provided our district at large with real ways that are going to close that achievement gap. So stop running from it. Looking at poverty is something you have to do when you live in an urban setting. Find out what the community, every community will tell you what you want. One of the things that annoyed me most, I was at a forum, I won't say which one, and someone said to me, well, traditional parents at traditional schools are unengaged. And I said, I'm not going to answer that question that way, because I find parents, I don't care where they are socioeconomically. I am finding the most engaged parents. And they will tell you, this is what my son needs, this is what my community needs, this is what my school needs. So you listen to that information or data, whatever word works for you, and you translate that into measurable outcomes to close the achievement gap. It can happen. All we have to do is focus on it.
Thank you so much. All right, Royce Mann.
Thank you for this question. This has to be our primary focus. We have nearly a sixty-point proficiency gap across content areas in Atlanta Public Schools between white and black students. And yes, we need to be focused on ensuring that we improve outcomes for all students, but we can't ignore the fact that there are communities that need greater support. And that's how we address the achievement gap, is ensuring that we are getting resources directly where the need is the greatest. We have a student success funding formula that we use as a district that allows us to use weights to get more funding to certain schools and certain students. I think we should increase the poverty weight in that formula. Right now, the weight for students in poverty is slightly lower than the weight for gifted students. I believe that students who are identified as gifted deserve a truly engaging curriculum, but I don't believe that they have needs that are greater than our students in poverty. We also need to invest in early education. If we're not providing universal pre-K for every family in Atlanta, we will not be able to address these gaps. And right now, we only offer about eleven hundred and fifty pre-K seats, yet have about close to four thousand rising kindergarteners each year. So there is a major gap there in terms of what we have to offer and what the need is. Wraparound services is another area that we need to increase capacity. The district has made it one of its goals, long-term goals, to have a student and family support hub in each cluster. I support this vision and I want to ensure that we build out strong community partnerships with organizations already doing the work to provide support around needs, whether it's mental health needs, nutritional needs, housing needs, whatever it might be, that create barriers for families to access full and complete education. And lastly, we need to be very intentional with ensuring that the programs we offer are actually equal or equitable, but they're not even equal at this point across schools. And if you look at a school like Midtown High School where I graduated from, you have access to nine different career pathways, over twenty AP classes. If you go to a school like Washington High School, you have access to only four different career pathways and less than ten AP classes. And I know I said lastly, but one other piece is we can't talk about achievement gaps without talking about disparities in discipline. Black students account for seventy-three percent of our student population, yet ninety-five percent of those given out of school suspensions. If we don't have a discipline system that's working to keep kids in school, then we aren't going to see the outcomes that we want to see.
Thank you so much. I just want to say halfway through, I really appreciate the candidates, you know, sticking to our protocols. This is going really, really smoothly. I appreciate everything you guys are doing with this. So we're going to continue with our questions, so we'll start with you, Royce Mann. This fourth question is purposefully vague, so that you can sort of take this in whatever direction you feel that you need to. It says, what do you see that is working in the district and how can we keep making progress in that particular way?
That's a great question. I think there are three areas that come to mind where I think we're moving in the right direction. One is literacy. We needed and need to continue with effective implementation of science of reading curriculum. We've seen initial gains over the last couple of years in our literacy rates, but we're nowhere near where we need to be. A couple of ways that I think we can continue that work is by expanding science of reading training to teachers beyond elementary school. Our teachers at the middle and high school level should also be equipped to identify gaps in literacy and begin interventions. I would say the second area that I think we're moving in the right direction is around student engagement. When I was interning for the Board of Education, one of my tasks was looking at how other districts had created student advisory councils. I was also proud to serve on the first iteration of the council here in APS. The work that they've done in growing the Student Advisory Council has been wonderful. And currently, there's a proposal to have a member of the council in a rotating capacity sit in on board work sessions and be able to provide feedback in real time to board members. And I think that any opportunity that we can take to elevate the voices of students in the policymaking process is a step in the right direction. And second, third, I think Dr. Johnson has done great work around getting more money directly to our classrooms and decreasing the central office budget. They've cut a lot of central office staff positions. Those have been really tough decisions to make, but we are seeing the positive results in more funds going directly where they need to go. I think that there's more we can do in analyzing a lot of the vendor contracts that we have and ensuring that we are only spending money on contracts, on contracts, things like educational tools, like technology that we might use in the classroom that are actually benefiting our students and families. So those are the three areas I think we're going in the right direction, and I look forward to supporting the work that's ongoing.
All right. Thank you so much. Ayesha.
About a year and a half ago, when Dr. Johnson was, I think, feeling out the seat, he came to Midtown High School. This is way before I thought about any school board seat. This is, this is hopefully recorded. You could go back and hear me say it. And I have to disagree with one of my opponents here immensely. I grew up here, one of the things that Atlanta should not be proud of, Atlanta Public Schools should not be proud of, is consistently, over the years, talking about two high schools. You cannot have two shining stars. You have the whole sky. So I remember saying to Dr. Johnson, a year and a half ago, I said, Dr. Johnson, we need better PR. We have great programs in every single high school. I don't care what high school you're talking about. Something great is happening there, but nobody knows about it. Well, I'm not going to give myself too much credit, but one of the things I am loving seeing is how APS is rocking it on social media. We live in an image-driven world anyway. Atlanta influences everything. Our kids are leading culture like you have never seen. Just go to any, any high school's page and look at where their seniors are going off to college. The way that we do it is far better than anyone in the nation. I have to know this because I have a senior at Midtown and she shows me everybody's pages. We have a tremendous amount of talent and we lead the culture. That is a great gift. Atlanta is the only city that doesn't have very much going on, but everybody in the world wants to come see it. That's a real gift, and our public education again has to support that. And for the first time in a long time, I am starting to see our public relations, I don't know if it's internal comp, I don't know who is behind it, but they are at every high school, every middle school, every elementary school, and they are shouting about the great things that APS is doing. That is super important. One of the things I say on the north side, when they say, you know, the north side is interesting, because they are in a interesting position with the school district. But one of, and you know, those who will come to the meeting and they'll say, you know, well, what can we do? And I will say to them, good news travels just like bad news. So if your child is rocking it out at an Atlanta Public Schools, you need to be telling your neighbors about that, just like everybody else does. Like we hear our neighbors, our friends whose kids have gone to private school and you see the bumper stickers and they've got the yard signs and all of that. We've got to do that too, because we have amazing programs. We have amazing students. So I, and I think we do it the best. We have certainly the best capability to do it. So I think a huge PR push, continue to push that, continue to elevate what we do well. Don't look at the school system as having two high schools. That's such a detraction from what everyone does well. And all of these high schools, I mean, now I know intimately, I mean, I thought it before, but now I'm in there. They are doing some incredible things that are not being done across the nation, and we just need to let people know about that more. and we just need to let people know about that more.
Thank you so much. Dr. Brock.
Yeah, so the first I would say is making science of reading our literacy curriculum. Phonics, evidence-based approach to reading is so important. And now that we are doing that, as I mentioned before, just making sure that it's done properly, that schools have all the resources they need to ensure that teachers and staff members understand exactly what it will take to be able to get students reading. Another one is our teacher salary, although it is tough on the budget and we've got to figure some of that piece out. I do think paying teachers more is so important, and I'm really glad that APS did make that investment because it's a very hard job. If anybody on the call has ever been a teacher, it's very difficult. And you sacrifice a lot being a teacher. And so I think investing in teachers and making sure that they have a great salary, not only does it keep teachers in the classroom, but it also attracts better talent to teaching versus other careers that they could have gotten into, which is really important. So I'd love to continue to make sure that we have equitable pay for teachers, but not even just that, but thinking about some of the things I said before, like stipends and opportunities to earn even more with growth in academics. And then, as I said, we are celebrating a high graduation rate, which I'm really happy that we are. But I'd love to make sure that students are actually prepared for their next step. So ensuring that every single student in APS has an actual post-secondary plan that they graduate with, and so they understand not just that they're going to college, but what are they going there for? What do they intend to do? And what steps will they need to take towards a career pathway? And then also making sure that we're implementing career-connected learning in our high schools so that young people have exposure to a lot of different career pathways and they have a better understanding of what it will actually take to get there. Because right now, the closest statistic, and this is the closest that I could find through one of our partners, is about twenty-nine percent of APS grads are actually graduating from their post-secondary pathway. And that's not in four years. That's a six year. Or for AAs, it's usually a four-year number. And so that's really tough, a tough pill to swallow to think that you do all this work in K-12 and then a student doesn't actually graduate from their post-secondary pathway. And so that goes back to us making sure that students are actually prepared for that pathway and that we're doing everything possible to give them whatever they need to make sure that that happens.
Thank you so much. This next question is close to home for many of us with, you know, as you guys know, the two RANXs, it's called. Nobody calls it that except for the APS consultants, by the way. That's Whiteford, and we all know it is. My son's there now. Many people on this call have children there, have had children there, or were hoping to have children there. And there's, there's an obvious question about what is, what is it that you all would do to prioritize keeping early learning on the east side? That's something that's close to home for many of us here, but just expanding it in general. So we'll start with you, Dr. Brock.
Yeah, I mean, there's so much data behind early literacy, early education, and the likelihood of a young person being able to not only just read, but have a life where they have economic mobility and where they are successful. Like so much of that starts as early as pre-K. And so this is incredibly important to me because they, you, you have such a leg up when you start earlier. And as you all have probably seen, when you have a kindergarten student come in who's had school and just understands how to even exist in a school among people, has a teacher versus who hasn't, they're already starting behind when they haven't had that opportunity. So I would love to see universal pre-K in our APS schools. And I have, before this role, have taught and been in the New York City DOE, which offers that, and it's just such an incredible program. And there's no reason APS shouldn't be able to invest in something like that as well. But one of the things I think about, and as we have conversations with community members across the city right now, is the communication of these programs. So in one of the clusters, we were at a meeting and they shared that they do have a lot of, more than some others do in terms of universal pre-K opportunity or pre-K opportunities, but a lot of parents don't know about it, or they don't even know that it exists, or they don't know how to get their kids to that kind of program. So where some places, there's a long waitlist, and other places, parents are not even aware of that kind of opportunity. So what I would like to do is to make sure that we're actually going out to the community, especially as we're mentioning, you know, across the city, what outcomes look like in different areas, making sure that we're going out south side, west side, places where that literacy proficiency rate is lower and engaging with parents. I also believe that we could do more invest, or we have to also look at the waitlists right now. And in the short term, make sure that we have solutions for places where that waitlist is long so that we can get students off the waitlist. But again, this whole facilities conversation, I hope that it does lead to more spots and opportunities for all students to have access to early learning programs.
All right, thank you. Ayesha.
I'm scared people with this conversation because I think we should have a 3K program. I put that in my campaign video. I mean, if Florida has 3K, we should have 3K. It is bizarre to me with one point eight five billion dollars and forty-seven, forty-eight thousand students. You would imagine there would be in the budget space for a 3K and a 4K. And that does not, you know, to Royce's point, if there's almost twenty-three hundred APS potential students that can't get into a 4K program, that's a real problem. On a personal note, I have one child who went to a very fancy prep school and was not as prepared for kindergarten, and two who went to a 4K, Georgia 4K, pre-K programs, and they were super ready for kindergarten. So I love to tell that story of people, I mean, you know, it's one of the Buckhead Prep schools, and it had its charms for sure, but he was not as prepared for kindergarten as my two students who went to Georgia pre-K, and that is a true story. So I think it's not just effective, it's almost extremely significant that we get this right sooner than later. I mean, our literacy rates on this end are because we did not start soon enough. And now we have had data. We are a decade out. We have seen these kids over this time. To change that, you start earlier. I mean, you get a child involved in learning, excited about learning at age four, and you can kind of see them get on that train and be very excited and hopefully not get off of it. We keep looking at this as, you know, we can start at five and six. It's very hard. A lot of children have been at home and haven't received the support for whatever reasons that they would receive if they were sitting in a 4K program. So I love the early learning annexes. There have been a couple throughout the years, and many of them have shifted. And we have got to find a way to make sure that we keep that pool of students and that age group really well protected. And I think we need to expand it to an even younger group of kids because I believe with an overhaul of the budget, we can find ways to make that happen.
Thank you so much. And Royce Mann.
I agree with a lot of what's been said. Universal pre-K is one of my top priorities. We talked about the gap in terms of what we offer and what is needed. I think that a lottery is a fine way to fund pre-K. We should never rely on a lottery to decide who gets to access it. And we have the resources at our fingertips. We have dozens of vacant properties. We have plenty of unutilized classrooms within existing elementary schools. And we can work with existing certified pre-K providers like Sheltering Arms to build out more capacity. I also think that we need to ensure that we're creating really strong protocols around transition between pre-K and elementary school and that whether we have pre-K classrooms within elementary schools or at other sites, that we create strong connections and collaboration between the schools that students are going to be entering into from those pre-K sites, whether that's cross-planning between teachers or co-planning between teachers, cross-collaboration when it comes to curriculum development and ensuring alignment. And so I think that's one piece that as we expand capacity for pre-K, we can't be forgetting about ensuring a smooth transition for families. And beyond that, we need to focus on outreach, on working with caregivers, with parents of, of young children, you know, starting at birth. There's no reason that we shouldn't have information in maternity wards about pre-K offerings in APS so that parents can start thinking about what that will look like for them. So yeah, I, I think expanding capacity is number one. And I don't think that repurposing existing facilities like Whiteford is the way to do that. I think that we should be looking at maintaining the pre-K classrooms there as well as expanding into some of the elementary schools.
Thank you. For our final question tonight, we wanted to talk about enrollment. Obviously, all the questions and all the topics we discussed earlier tie back to enrollment and FTE. And so the question is, what steps would you take to ensure in the coming years, if you're elected to the Board of Education, what would you do to ensure that the enrollment of APS does not decline as it's predicted to slightly do in the face of changing demographics and accessibility challenges in our city? We'll start with you, Mr. Mann.
I think first is ensuring that we're on the same page with the city of Atlanta and ensuring that we are fully aware of the impact that development, especially around housing and affordable housing, might have on enrollment and are preparing for that. And beyond that, it's about building out innovative programs and ensuring that Atlanta Public Schools are the best choice for every family in Atlanta. And I think we're beginning to explore some of those options. I think a school of the arts is a great first step. I think other magnet programs, such as a STEM magnet program, such as a magnet program for pre-medical professions would be other great options. And other partnerships that provide incentives for families to be in the district, such as a partnership with MARTA to provide free public transit to APS high schoolers, such as partnerships with tutoring centers to use some of our vacant facilities to provide free tutoring services to APS families. If we can incentivize more families to come back to the district through showing them and demonstrating that we have the best programs and the best supports to offer for students and families, I think that's the way to go.
Thank you so much. And to you, Ayesha.
I don't like the word ensure either because I think that's very hard to do. Like, you know, if you're looking at population trends, it's very hard to say that we will not, we will have any impact on increasing enrollment in APS. This, I mean, I don't know what in the world is considered affordable these days. I mean, you know, I love on social media where people are like, affordable to who? I mean, this city is not necessarily affordable and it's not going to get more affordable. And Royce is one hundred percent correct. I mean, that, that puts the mayor's office and the school board, they need to be really on one accord. You know, what does this mean? What does all of this development mean for our communities? But they're in the business of expanding Atlanta, not necessarily enrollment in APS, although they do go hand in hand in some regards. I think it's very hard to use the term ensure. What I would be focused on is strengthening the programs that we have and/or expanding ones where there is a need. And thirdly, as I said before, good news spreads like bad news does. The programs that we have that are existing, we have to tell people. I mean, people are deciding not to attend Atlanta Public Schools from the time they get pregnant. And it's like, well, you haven't even given it a chance. You know, so if your neighbor has kids at the local APS school and has told you about it during your pregnancy, maybe you'll be more willing to try it. So I think we have to use some very smart PR tactics. It is hard to bring in, and again, I've been an APS parent now for twelve years. Well, actually, she went to a pre-K, but anyway, it is hard. You rarely see kids who come back to the district. What we've got to do is keep them in the district. If you see a host of healthy enrollment in elementary, it, it tapers off immensely in the middle school. And every now and then, you might see a floater or two that comes back in high school. But you don't see any population returning to APS schools for high school. So I think there's a lot of opportunity in middle school for sure. Figuring that out could be key in terms of keeping parents and, and families in APS. But we have just got to prioritize how we make our programs functional and much better, quite frankly, for our families who are here. So that becomes sort of the word-of-mouth campaign for the next generation of APS students because it's going to be hard to fight against what's happening in the city, if we're being honest.
Thank you so much. And finally, you, Dr. Brock.
Yeah, so you know, I think each cluster needs to have resources for all of their students. Because as you all know, having a school that's close by, that you can easily get to, some people can even walk to, is really important. And the recent diversion study that saw like why students were leaving the district found that it was mostly based on program offerings and specific program offerings for their students. So there's that one piece where making sure that we have programs in every cluster that meets students' needs and so students don't have to travel all the way across Atlanta to have their needs met is critical. Another one is, we haven't talked about our absenteeism rate. It's thirty-one percent. And so there are a large amount of students that are just not coming to school. And so making sure not only do we have people who are assigned to getting kids back into school, to meeting with families, to building those relationships to make that happen, but also that school is a great place for kids, where they feel welcome, where they see, where they feel valued and where they find that there are programs that are actually meeting their needs and making it enjoyable to be there. Because with the changes in the way we educate and technology, and then especially post-COVID, it's also just really different now to be in classrooms. And so we've got to think a little bit more innovatively to make sure that young people are actually there and present and learning. And then, you know, there's investment in community is a really big piece of this as well. I think it is hard to have an incredible school, but then everything is kind of falling apart around it. And so investing in communities, working with city council, because that relationship is not very strong. And you can ask almost everybody in APS or a city council, and they will admit that that relationship has not historically been very strong. But it needs to be because if a student is coming to school hungry, if a student is coming to school and they haven't had, you know, a good night of sleep or there's a lot of instability at home, it's very difficult to come to school and just learn. So I think building those partnerships that are needed to make sure that students are taken care of so that they can come to school, so that they can learn, so that they won't be absent, is also important as well. So narrowing that down, I would say, addressing the absenteeism rate and then also making sure that we have programs in every cluster that meet the needs of students and families.
Thank you so much. Well, I just want to say on behalf of the Tumor PTA here, as well as the other schools represented from the east side, we thank you all so much for your time. We know that you are very busy this time of year. We also know you signed up for it, so here's, here's one more chance. And to everybody out there, obviously, you're here because you are going to vote in this election. The last day of early voting appears to me to be on Halloween at seven PM. And nobody's going to be out voting at that point, so do it before then. Bessie Brannum, for folks, you guys know, even though the construction's going on, that's a great place to do the early voting. So with that, I want to thank the candidates and anyone else who was here just for the candidate forum. At this point, if you don't want to hear about what's going on with the Tumor PTA, you are welcome to exit. You're also welcome to stick around. So thank you all for being here.
Thank you for having us.
Thank you so much.
All right. Thank you all so much, everyone who joined. And anyone who's still hanging out, if you want to hear one of the best things we do at Tumor PTA meetings is we kick off our meetings with what we call tumor toasts.
And anyone who's still hanging out, if you want to hear one of the best things we do at Tumor PTA meetings, is we kick off our meetings with what we call tumor toasts. And that is where we get a chance to shout out all the great things that are happening at our school, which I think is really, really important. So we will kick it off with whoever whoever wants to.
Can I ask for like a small thing, if there anybody, if there's anybody that wants to do a toast? Can we stop recording and record for each? It'll help us.
Oh, Karen.
Toast on YouTube. If not, then